The Future of Education is a co-production of Detroit Public Television and the Center for Michigan.
This program is part of American Graduate. Let's make it happen. A public media initiative made possible by the Corporation for Public Broadcasting.
Hi there, and welcome to the Future of Education Town Hall. I'm Kristy McDonald. This program was created by Detroit Public Television and the Center for Michigan as part of the American Graduate Project. Today, we will focus on what's happening in education across the state. The future of our education system affects everyone, from parents and students to educators and employers. In January, the Center for Michigan released its report on the public's agenda for public education. It's an in-depth look at what Michigan citizens want from the education system. And, as the Center found in the year it spent traveling around the state, there's no shortage of ideas. It seems everyone agrees things should be changed, and some issues consistently ranked as more important than others. But just how these changes should be implemented and what it will cost is often the bigger question. So today, we've convened two panels of experts to participate in a candid conversation about early childhood education and some alternate education options that are available. Before we sit down with our panelists, let's take a look at some of the questions the Center asked you in this education study and some of your answers. Some of the findings might surprise you.
A huge undertaking, to be sure, but the Center for Michigan works to represent the voices that are often not heard. In this case, the voices of families and people with a vested interest in the state's education system. The Center began this process in early 2012. They held over 200 community conversations, including parents, students, teachers, and employers. The Center also conducted two statewide phone polls. In total, over 5,800 people participated, and the report found the overall grade for the statewide system was a mediocre C. But when asked what letter grade people would give their local public education system, a bit of an improvement. The grade was a solid B. The study found a similar difference between educators and those who use the system, like parents and students. Educators were more likely to give an A or B to the statewide system, but both groups gave their local education system a better-than-average grade. The study also asked about how important teacher preparation was in terms of improving student learning outcomes, and found about 40% of those polled thought it was crucial. That same number also thought it was important. The need for stronger support to educators was also a top priority. In fact, about 80% of those surveyed listed more support for educators as a crucial or important concern. In terms of how important it is to hold educators more accountable for student learning, the report found about 60% say this is an issue crucial or important to them. The study also asked about expanding preschool and early childhood education programs. That was cited as crucial by 45% of those surveyed and important for 30%. And that desire for expanding early childhood education is an issue that is getting a lot of attention in Lansing. The governor even talked about his commitment to early childhood education in his State of the State address.
We have 29,000 students that are eligible for a program to get them into preschool. I don't believe we can accomplish all that, and I'm open to coming up with creative ideas to get there. But I think it's important we make a major commitment, a major budget commitment, to get as many kids as possible and get us on a path to getting all those kids in Great Start Early Childhood Programs.
It's a plan that many parents agree is the right choice.
The most important thing to me about the early childhood education would be that it sets up your whole lifetime learning. I mean, that's where you start. That's where you want that good experience there.
As the governor mentioned, one of the more popular early childhood education programs is called Great Start Readiness.
Well, she went the four-day-a-week preschool, so it was Monday through Thursday, and she had the halftime program. So that was, we started at 8 o'clock and went until about 11:30.
This program has provided quality preschool education to over 500,000 at-risk four-year-olds since it began in 1985. Research shows students attending this program did better throughout their academic careers. And that beginning foundation actually had an impact on the rest of their educational careers and even their lives. For one family, it's a program already earning high marks.
Every morning, even now, they walk down the stairs, Lillian and Violet, and they count. Violet is two and a half. She can count to 15. And Lillian, going to the Great Start. There's such a growth in confidence and articulation even.
Perhaps the biggest question, how and who will pay for these programs? As part of this survey, the Center did ask participants one question about money. The question, do you think Michigan needs to spend more to improve education and student achievement? The answer, by a wide margin, 70%, was a resounding yes.
We also continue to hear them say they want to spend differently. Even after these tough budget years, there is a sense that there are more efficiencies to be had.
Some ideas for those efficiencies included consolidation of services across districts and cost-cutting in pensions and benefits. Another popular idea was streamlining regulations and the funding process from Lansing. Ultimately, the discussion will continue, but you can and should get involved.
And we are focusing our first conversation today on early childhood education. As you can see, we're joined by an audience right here in our studio who will have a chance to ask questions. And just a reminder for everyone watching online or at home, you can ask questions as well. Just find us on Twitter at CenterForMI and use the hashtag #FutureEdMI to join the conversation. So let's start off by introducing you to our first panel. Phil Power is the founder and chairman of the Center for Michigan, the ones who crafted this year-long study of what people really think of education in the state of Michigan. Also joining us Denise Smith. She is the vice president of Early Childhood for Excellent Schools Detroit. It's a nonprofit working to help Detroit children have a great education. Also with us is Scott Menzel, the superintendent of the Washtenaw Intermediate School District. And finally, also with us, Pat Convery, a member of the Children's Leadership Council of Michigan, which is a coalition of child advocates working to further early childhood education. All of you, thank you so much for joining us here today at Public Television.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
All right, before we start our conversation, I want to get a little bit of context here. And Denise, can you talk to us a little bit about what Excellent Schools Detroit actually does?
Absolutely. Excellent Schools Detroit was really formed as a coalition of stakeholders, civic leaders, as well as philanthropy to drive conditions that assure that there are excellent children from cradle to career are in excellent environments by 2020. Those excellent environments will be providing high-quality education. And so it's become a critical component of our strive to ensure that children are graduating career and college-ready by that time.
All right, and Pat, could you just give us a little bit about what Children's Leadership Council of Michigan does?
Children's Leadership Council is a group of more than 120 business leaders across the state. It's chaired by Doug Luciani up in Traverse City and Debbie Dingle down here in southeast Michigan. And our goal is to get increased attention for early childhood education and early childhood care, also from cradle to education, and very supportive of additional funding and not keeping, not balancing the education budget on the backs of early childhood.
All right, so let's dive right in. Phil, talk to us about why the Center decided to tackle education this year, and in particular, talking about early childhood education.
Our interest in early childhood education goes back about five years, when we talked with more than 10,000 Michigan citizens about what kind of state they wanted and what's an action plan for that kind of state. And one of the things that came to the top of the heap was improving our schools, and in particular, doing so by working on early childhood. The science of brain development is now very, very clear. Little kids learn their best from age zero to five, and at the same time, kindergarten starts at five. And the data from the scientists and all the developmental people show that kids who go to early childhood perform far better in school, are more likely to graduate, more likely to get good jobs, less likely to get in jail, less likely to get into drugs. So in a sense, early childhood really moves the needle in so many things that, and what happened is that people who participated in our community conversations said, this is important. It's not being talked about. Let's work on it. Our second phase that we did last year was 5,000 Michigan citizens talking about the public's agenda for public education, and one of the top priorities, again, was early childhood.
Did that surprise you?
No, not at all. We don't know what those data look like while we're doing the community conversation. They're all data-based at public sector consultants, a partner in Lansing. But when the data came out, we were not surprised, and that gave us the stimulus to go to Lansing and talk with the governor and the legislature about really improving state support for the Great Start Readiness Program. Michigan spends $14 billion a year on K-12, but only a little more than $100 million on Great Start Readiness Program. And there are almost 30,000 kids in Michigan who qualify for this program but aren't enrolled because there aren't slots.
So Scott, give me an idea of some of the successes that you're seeing then in the classroom from having these kids with the Great Start Readiness Program in Washtenaw.
Well, students who participate in the program truly do have an opportunity to master the skills necessary to be successful when they enroll in kindergarten. And it's not just about kindergarten entry. This is about their entire educational career. So I want to be sure that people understand that it's not just like an inoculation. You can't just give them Great Start Readiness preschool, and then they're going to be successful all the way through.
And they're done. They're good.
It's the whole system, right? The governor talked about P-20. But what we've seen is that students who participate are better prepared, both from an academic perspective as well as a social-emotional perspective, to learn and master what they're expected to do in kindergarten. So that's significant. But as Phil was mentioning, we have a lot of students who aren't able to enroll because we don't have sufficient funding. You probably know that Washtenaw County is the home of the Perry Preschool Study, which is the most cited research about the positive impact of a high-quality preschool experience.
Can you give us some details for people who may not be informed about it?
So 50 years ago, a couple of visionary gentlemen decided that they were going to invest significantly for at-risk children of color in Ypsilanti, Michigan, and provide a high-quality preschool experience that was really focused not just on academics but also a kind of a whole-child approach. And what they've done is they've tracked the life experiences of those students throughout the last 50 years to see where they ended up. And the evidence is overwhelmingly positive in terms of the impact, not just as they went through their educational experience, but in life in general. And so as we think about those kinds of things, this investment has a long tail in terms of the return on investment.
Denise, so we hear the impact for children if they can get into these programs, but in the schools that you're working with in Detroit right now, how many of these kids are actually able to be in an early childhood, in a preschool, pre-K environment?
So the numbers are not where we want them to be. When we look at programs who are actually providing high-quality services and use the measure that the state has devised with Great Start to Quality, the tier-quality rating improvement system, in Wayne County, there are about 1,249 programs. Of those, only 373 are actually participating actively in Great Start to Quality. What that says is that the preparation that's needed and the environment that should be there to really engage these students correctly, that teacher effectiveness, is not happening. The environments that need to be in place are not there. So the numbers of 40,000 about children in Wayne County who should be in these particular environments are not getting the care that they need. When we started last year and working at the state level with Great Start to Quality, we knew that there were about 60% of children who are on unlicensed care. And so Great Start to Quality Orientation started to move that needle to put more children in licensed environments. And so right now, we're about at 50/50, unlicensed, licensed. So there's still a lot of work to do, a lot of work to assure that the programs that are there and existing are providing high-quality service. And so that is the issue.
It's also interesting, because it also sounds like to me that it's also somewhat of a public relations campaign. I mean, you talked, Phil, that it's been five years in the making that you've been talking about early childhood education and the awareness of it at the Center. So Pat, let me ask you, are we finally connecting and are we finally getting people to think about education more than just K through 12? That we are looking beyond into these little ones, to getting them prepared to when they actually do walk into kindergarten?
Well, I think our governor is helping a great deal, as is Phil's group. But there are still people out there that call it babysitting. It's my job to raise my kids, not the state's job.
How do you answer those people?
Well, you talk about the changing world that we're in now. And from a business perspective, I'm with the Howell Area Chamber of Commerce, and our business, our businesses are seeing this as an economic issue to provide talented people. And right now, we have so much talent that is either going someplace else or is just not here. And that's a huge issue for the entire state. If we can have our children reading at grade level at the end of third grade, that is something that preschool education is really helps, then they are successful in elementary school, successful in high school, and then successful in college, or whatever they do after college as far as technical training. These are the kind of folks that the state of Michigan needs for, needs to be a great state again. We have state representatives who, when this conversation started, thought this was ridiculous and used terms like the nanny state. Now that they're seeing the data, and the data is so clear, they have completely done a 180 and see the value of this.
Scott, what are parents saying to you? What are they asking you? Do you find that more parents are asking about preschool programs? Or what does the district provide? Or what can I do for my kids?
Well, recognize that most parents look for preschool opportunities for their children. And what the Great Start Readiness Program is designed to do is target those children and families where they may not have access or may not have the resources to be able to secure a quality preschool opportunity. And so our challenge is really reaching out to those families who may not know that it's available or who may not understand that it's important. Most of the other families are already actively seeking out opportunities for their children. And one of the challenges we have in the state is to make sure that every child in Michigan has an opportunity to enter kindergarten ready to succeed. And some don't have the same assets at home as others. And so that's part of the challenge with GSRP. And so we've got a very intentional effort to recruit families who may not understand that this is a possibility for them, and that's part of what we've been doing with GSRP.
Denise, how hard is it then to connect parents to what programs are available and out there? Do you find that you're constantly trying to help people say, no, this is what we have available. Let's get your kids there?
Yes. So the connections are essential, and there is an awareness and an educational curve that needs to occur as well. So while I may be seeking the best environment for my child, it's not always with the knowledge of what that looks like. What is a high-quality environment? What should I be looking for when I go to these sites and visit to place my child? So there's a lot of education that needs to take place. And so there are tools now with Great Start Connect where you can go and find out about programs with their rating system to see where they're geared. But those are on the beginning phases of it. And so we don't have enough information to actually arm our parents with it. Even with Excellent Schools Detroit, we have a report card that actually grades schools in the environments that we live, which will include these early learning programs as well. So we're trying to put out the tools so that parents actually have the resources to make those informed decisions. But many parents actually choose environments based on referral. Where did my friend go?
Right.
And those kinds of relationships. So we want them to be more savvy consumers in looking at other things other than what my friend said was a good environment, to really determine the best placement that's going to really push those children.
Yeah, and sometimes that's sometimes the only information that they have to go on.
That's right.
So Phil, let me ask you this. Are we starting to change the way that we think about education as parents about when education should start, how education should look for our kids?
We have sadly split education into little silos. Pre-K, K-12, community colleges, four-year, vocational. And what that's done is set up turf and fights between each of these little silos, when actually what we're talking about is how do you invest in human skills and capability and experience and insight? And how do you get a competitive, productive workforce to make this state go forward? And what's beginning to happen is people are realizing that we're not talking about just one piece of schools. We're talking about how do you invest in human capital to make everybody better and make the state prosper? This takes a long time. But I think in talking with the legislature, and right now, we are talking with the legislature about substantially increasing state support for the Great Start Readiness Program. And legislators are beginning to realize that parents understand that early childhood is critical to their kids and that the kids who need it the most, poor kids, minority kids, kids from broken families, are those who aren't getting the kinds of educational experience they need, and they're the kind of kids who need the help the most, and that's what we're all about.
All right, so you started the money conversation. I had the money conversation, probably a couple more questions now, Phil. I have to jump on it now, because again...
Well, it's a big deal.
It's a big deal, because you talk about education, and it is about the children, and it is about making sure that they've got curriculum and they've got the tools to learn. But it also does come down to money. And it comes down to how much money there is, and how much money is it going to take to pay for certain programs, and who's going to get it. So I think it's very interesting you talk about the silos, and if you start up, is there any kind of competition between your K through 12s and looking for that state funding and college? And now, pre-K's coming into it. So let's back up, and let's talk about the governor's proposed $130 million for the Great Start Readiness Program over a couple of years. Scott, what was your reaction to that when you heard that?
So first, I was encouraged by that investment. We've known for a long time that it's a most conservative estimate, that for every dollar you invest in early childhood, you save $7 in other costs that we spend down the road. Costs in terms of remediation in school, costs in terms of retention and grade. Last year alone, 100, I'm trying to remember the numbers, 13,000 kindergarten students, $100 million worth of state aid that went to students who repeated kindergarten. So we're going to spend the money, one way or the other. What we know is that if we invest on the front end, we're going to save money on the back end, because we're not going to have some of those additional costs that are associated with not spending on the front end. So it's about how we prioritize our resources. And the fact that the governor acknowledged that this investment was one of the most important we can make, given the data, it was very encouraging from my perspective.
And what were your thoughts, Pat?
Absolutely. We've been talking about that $130 million at the Children's Leadership Council, and it was wonderful to hear that come from the podium at the governor's State of the, or budget presentation. And now, you know, we're waiting and seeing. Now, there's a lot of work that Phil's doing, our legislators are doing, people like Scott are doing, the Children's Leadership Council is doing, to see how much of that becomes reality. That $100 million number that Scott just quoted is just stunning to me when I first discovered it, that for the kids that have to do kindergarten one more time, it costs us $100 million. That's just, I mean, there's most of the money right there. If we could cut that down even by half, that's 50...
It's a staggering amount.
And you know, I'm going to jump in here, but there is one other cost with early childhood that you don't hear too much about, is getting the children to early childhood, the transportation issues. In districts like ours that are semi-rural, everybody, most everybody, needs a school bus or needs a parent to take the child to school. Well, if the parent is working, which we all want the parents to do, there's an issue. What about afterwards, when the parent is still working? Who cares for the child? So it is a difficult situation, and that's one of the reasons why not all the children who may be eligible, even if the money is there, will partake in this because of those other obstacles.
So we talk about the work that's going on in Lansing now, and people are talking about this. Denise, is there any kind of collaboration between organizations like yours and like Pat's? What kind of coalition is there among the groups saying, hey, let's, all of us who are fighting for early childhood education, we are all going to get together and we're going to lobby in a certain way? What kind of coordination can you share with us?
So one of our efforts at Excellent Schools Detroit is the Drive Detroit Initiative, where we're actually doing just that. So it's about bringing together all those involved, all those interested parties, to ensure that we're talking about not only a policy platform, but what are the programmings and interventions that need to be there to assure that our children are on this trajectory of graduating and career-ready. So with Drive Detroit, we look at indicators across the continuum of cradle-to-career to really guide us, to see if we're making the moves that are necessary to put those children in the right place. And that is a coalition of civic and philanthropy working together to see that that happens. I think on a broader scale, when we're talking about really looking at advocacy and making sure that the things are happening for our young children, we have the Great Start Network, where we have the collaboratives and others with, who are working with, for example, the Power Rally that happens every year, Star Power, and really bringing to the attention of legislators what it is that we need for our young children.
All right, so Phil, go ahead.
One of the things about this, I don't mean to jump in, but one of the things that's really striking about discussions about early childhood in Lansing with elected officials is how much this is not a partisan issue.
Right.
There are Republicans who love it, there are Democrats who love it, there are mugwumps and independents who love it, and...
Not that we're calling anybody any names here, right?
No, no. But I guess the point is, in these debates, so much the debate has been about adults and who controls what, and not about kids.
Are they willing to spend the money, though, Phil?
The short answer is yes, because the return on investment in early child...
Yeah.
...is so enormous.
There's an economic case for it.
Yeah, definitely. And I think that's been the biggest assist to our Actually Seeing movement.
Absolutely.
We look at a wild report that came out last year for a single early learner. The return on investment is $100,000. That's one child. And so it's magnificent when you think about investing that money early as opposed to using it later for remediation, that it is the best choice to make.
So what is happening right now in Lansing that you can tell us about, Phil? Come on, give us some backroom conversations.
Well, the backroom conversations are taking place right now as we are talking, because the legislative subcommittees met yesterday and today on the question of shall, as the governor has proposed, the state increase budget for early childhood programs by about $180 million, which is in effect tripling over two years, the amount of money that is now spent. And there are arguments, and there always will be, because making legislation is just like making sausages. It's complicated, and you don't want to look at it.
You don't really want to see the process.
But one of the things that is coming out is that some people are saying, well, we don't need early childhood, because the evidence about Head Start is that it doesn't have much of a long effect. Head Start is the federal program that aims at people who are at the federal poverty level. The Great Start Readiness Program is the state's program that aims at kids two and three times the federal poverty level. And there is a fair amount of research saying that some Head Start programs work very well, and some don't work so well. But the research and the data about the Great Start Readiness Program, Michigan's own program, which we designed and which we administer here in Michigan, is that it is very effective. Kids graduate quicker, the return on investment is enormous, and so attacking Head Start as a way to beat up on Great Start Readiness doesn't make any sense at all.
Okay, so we heard the president talk about that in his State of the Union address, Scott. So clear that up, clear the differences up, and do you have confusion from parents saying, well, wait, if we're going to get this federal program, what's this different from the state program? Help us out.
Well, in terms of the president's proposal, he wanted to partner with states in terms of expanding preschool access. And so Michigan, I would think, would be in a prime position with our increased investment in the Great Start Readiness Program to receive supplemental federal funds if they were to materialize. And I don't want to speculate, given sequestration and the federal budget challenges.
That's a whole different show, Scott, actually. I'm not quite sure we have the time for that.
So I don't think we'd put all our eggs in that basket, but to say, there's an opportunity, really. We know that with a high-quality Great Start Readiness preschool program, the results speak for themselves. We've followed a full cohort through graduation. We know that they're more likely to graduate on time, that they're less likely to be retained in grade, that they outperform students who didn't have a Great Start Readiness preschool experience on the state's assessments in third grade. So as we look at that data, there are opportunities to partner with Head Start programs, to blend and braid the funding, where if you have a half-day Head Start program and a half-day Great Start Readiness program, we can give the students who are most at risk a full-day, high-quality preschool experience that will help ensure that they're ready to succeed when they move into the traditional system.
Okay. Pat, let me ask you, as we kind of look in our crystal ball a little bit, where are we going to be, do you think, in five years? Where would you like to see us in terms of early childhood? I know, I'm letting you go whole hog here.
Well, we have a big hairy audacious goal in Livingston County that came out of our strategic growth plan called Advantage Livingston. And we decided that we wanted to have early childhood education available for every child, rich, poor, middle, that it would just be part of the culture in Livingston County.
Do you think it's possible?
Absolutely. Anything is possible. And there is so much passion out there now. We have, you're talking about collaboration, we have pretty much everybody at the table on this. We have business, we have education, we have people who are providing these kind of services, both privately and publicly. And we also have some corporations who see this as valuable. How we're going to fund it, we're not at that point yet. We did get a little bit of funding, that we're going to be doing some pilot programs. But yes, that's what I would like to see. I would like to see that this would be as normal as going to kindergarten when you're five years old.
All right, so Denise, I'm going to give you the same question then.
Sure.
What would you like to see, or what do you project that is doable in the next five years?
Yeah. So I would want and hope that both the governor and the president's pledges are realized, and with that blending funding that allows opportunities, not just for four-year-olds, but for children from birth all the way to five. We know that 90% of the child's brain architecture is formed between zero... We know that 90% of the child's brain architecture is formed between zero and three, so just to leave it to four-year-olds is not enough. So having those two in effect would essentially give us that broader spectrum, which is what we need. I would add to that, that we also look to increase teacher effectiveness by giving them the supports that they need. I would argue that that's probably the biggest difference between Great Start Readiness and Head Start, that they have ongoing coaching and development. And that's what you need after a seminar, after a conference, someone to be there to really watch what you're doing and assist you in becoming better.
And as someone who's in the system right now and working with those teachers, what is your projection, the next couple of years, what you'd like to see?
Well, the increased investment is important, but it's really about a commitment of the state of Michigan to support every child, to ensure that regardless of the circumstances of their birth, they're given an opportunity to be successful and to develop their full potential. That's why people go into the teaching profession, it's why people commit their careers to public education, and this investment needs to start before kindergarten. It really needs to be from birth all the way through the educational process. And I think we have an opportunity to truly create that system.
Yeah, I think you're right. We need to kind of stop thinking of it as K through 12. Phil, you want to give your projection for the next couple of years?
Here's a quick thought. There are states that predict the needs that they have to put people in prison based on third-grade reading scores.
This is very interesting, right?
That's such a simple way to say how important this is. I would hope, Kristi, in five years, that we would do away with the silos, that we would begin to say that the most important investments that we can make as a state for our future prosperity are in the skills and brain and talent and abilities of all of our citizens. If that is the fundamental basis of making a prosperous state, we need to recognize it, we need to quit fighting and squalling about it and having turf fights, and we need to recognize that there's a difference between sensible, tough-minded investments which return and just yelling about it.
Okay. All right, well, you know, we're going to open it up now to questions. We have a great audience here sitting with us and who have been ready to ask their questions of our panel. So we have a first question over here. Go ahead, ma'am, go ahead, tell us your name and where you're from and your question.
Okay. My name is Ayanna Knox-Potts. I'm in Rochester, Michigan, mother of six. And I have a huge concern about having access to the information needed for our children to get the requirements prior to kindergarten. Where are we to find that information before they even start kindergarten, outside of the so-called childcare and things like that? We don't even have the adequate materials to know the requirements currently in our educational system.
That's a fair question. Who wants to take that?
I can speak to a couple of things to point to. The state's in the process of adopting and formalizing the early learning standards so that the state board of education is supposed to do that this month. So that information will be available on the Michigan Department of Education website. Locally, within each ISD where you operate the Great Start Readiness Programs, there will be information available about expectations and program opportunities. And in the governor's budget proposal, he's looking at a 2% set aside for outreach and recruitment, so that we can actually get information into the hands of parents as they're thinking about how to best ensure that their children are prepared.
In addition to that, there are two websites that you might be able to go to, which is Great Start Connect and Great Start Quality. And they do provide resources and information about what a quality environment is.
Excellent. Great question. Thank you. All right, go ahead, sir.
How are you today?
Good, thank you. Go ahead and tell us who you are and where you're from.
My name is Darryl Stambro and I'm from Detroit, Michigan. My question was how, because of the diversity in southeast Michigan, some cultures don't necessarily want their students in school before the age of five. So how would you provide the resources so they can see and understand the benefits of education as far as being at home or not going to school?
Who wants to tackle that?
So you're saying how to teach the parents to teach the child or how to encourage the parents to bring their children to?
Well, just kind of cultivate the skill sets while they're at home if they don't want to go to public school initially, and then once they get to kindergarten, how then they'll be able to adapt or acclimate easier versus missing school from zero to four, five years old.
I know there are a lot of great resources online for that, but I'm not the expert in that area. I just wanted to clarify the question.
Well, I don't think anybody is saying as a requirement that all children ought to go to preschool. That's a decision that parents are going to make.
Yes.
And it's going to be an informed decision about whether they feel this is better done at home than in some other kind of environment. A key thing, however, when it gets to parents, is that from the very beginning of a child's life, if parents are involved in reading with their child, playing with their child, holding their child, engaging with their child, that is going to make absolutely the difference. And once you get to that point, it is pretty clear that early childhood programs bear a tremendous return for parents. But some parents may say, no, we don't want to do that. Okay, we shouldn't force them. But I think at the end of the day, the evidence is going to be so clear that these programs work that most parents are going to want to engage in them.
Okay, we have another question. Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Well, thank you. Go ahead and tell us who you are.
My name is Glenna Fritz. I'm from Brighton, Michigan, product of Detroit Public Schools, a retired high school teacher of 37 years, have lived in Washtenaw County, currently in Livingston County, and I'm passionate about education.
Excellent.
We're all aware that children mimic adult behaviors and learn very early on from what they're exposed to, both at home and in the grocery store or at daycare, wherever. I work in the field of personal finance education, and I'd like to ask anyone on the panel how you feel about incorporating financial literacy into early childhood education.
I would love to respond to that. We actually, in Washtenaw County, have a grant from PNC Bank to do just that. So we've been incorporating financial literacy in our Head Start and GSRP programs across Washtenaw County this last year in order to be able to build a solid foundation so that the fundamentals of personal finance are a part of what's included in the preschool experience. But we're also partnering with the families because many families need that support as well. So it's a great opportunity to build that capacity, both for the young children as well as their families.
What does that curriculum look like? What are they actually doing?
Well, it's very intentional. There are some things in terms of it's save, share, or spend, right? And so they're learning at a preschool age. It's pretty simple conceptually, but it's something that, you know, if you spend it, you don't have it. And so they're learning that, you know, there's only so much to go around if you save it or share it, because we want to also encourage the opportunity to give. And so thinking through all of those things, it's a creative way to approach it. And we were really grateful to PNC for providing the funding to do that as a pilot program.
Wow, that's excellent. Oh, I hope other districts hear that from you or hear this right now, because I have a four-year-old. That sounds really good. I think about that. All right, go ahead. Hi, ma'am.
My name is Dr. Stephanie Bayasi, and I'm from Midland, Michigan. And my question is related to K-12 things. Why is it that student evaluations are based on one standardized test score rather than comparing a baseline score that might be done initially with subsequent scores so that districts can be looked at as to improving the student's work?
Well, I would give a couple of responses to that. One, we know that for ease of reporting purposes, MEEP scores get overemphasized. But from a school perspective, we really are interested in that growth data. And as we're moving towards a smarter balanced assessment, which will be implemented in 2014, we're going to be looking at individual growth over time rather than just that single point in time assessment. So we're having a more sophisticated approach to assessment and student growth than what we previously had. So that is, I think, in process and something that will be very important because regardless of where a student starts, what we want to truly determine is, did they make progress over the course of that year of education and instruction? And I think the tools to be able to do that are in the works.
There's a fair amount of thought going into this right now. The dean of the University of Michigan School of Education, Deborah Ball, is leading a group that is trying to figure out how best to evaluate the growth that kids have in schools and get off this business in which only one standardized test is the only thing that matters.
Right. And I would offer with what we're doing with the Drive Detroit is really looking at a number of indicators, not just MEEP scores. So our report card does look at growth data and all those things, and beginning to even determine how we can look at grit as a component of children's success.
All right, all right, we have another question over here. Hi, how are you?
Hi, good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Dr. Zigman Kaziki, and I'm with the Central Michigan University Global Campus, and I teach in Livonia. So this is kind of a global question, if you can conceptualize it. What can we do to move or advance past the agrarian, farm-based school schedule into a more contemporary, modern school schedule? And the caveat to this is, having studied school systems throughout the world, they've moved away from the agrarian model or are rapidly moving away from it. And yet I see, for some reason, we're still struggling with this whole concept.
Change. You know what? You talked about, the center, as part of the study, talked about should we do a year-round school? And we were going to touch on that a little bit in the next panel. But Phil, go ahead and talk about that right now. The results actually surprised me.
It's, a lot of people have said, why have two or three months' break in the summer when kids are supposed to be out of school? And in the 19th century, they went back to the farm and helped with getting the crops in and doing the work. The data are pretty clear that children forget a lot over that summer period, especially poor and vulnerable children. And so there is a thought, gee, change this, let's have year-round school, let's get away from this model. We asked that question in the Center for Michigan's Community Conversations and inquired exactly about that school schedule. And frankly, we were surprised that there didn't seem to be very much interest in it. We expected that parents were going to say, well, this is a good idea, kids forget too much. I suspect that part of what's going on is that a lot of families have organized their time and their calendars to spend the summer with their kids. Kids go to camp, families plan vacations, on and on. So there's a conflict between family, culture, and habit, and some of the educational performance issues that get involved.
Did that surprise any of you, that people really weren't looking towards an alternative calendar at all?
No, it wasn't surprising. I mean, quite frankly, if you think about it, if parents were demanding it, school boards would have adopted it.
Right. It is parent-driven, I think.
Yeah. And no, it's not surprising, but I think what we need to do is to provide more data to substantiate why it needs to be done.
A little bit more information.
Yeah, nationwide, they're looking at summer reading loss. And so I think those kinds of data points will assist parents and others in knowing what is my child, let's bring it home to the individual, losing during this period when in fact he could be gaining.
Do you talk about that in the schools at all, Scott? I mean, is September and October, are they kind of termed catch-up time when you start back up at school? Or how would you, how is that discussed?
It really becomes MEEP preparation time because the state assessment's in October. And so, and students are being assessed on what they learned in the prior year.
Is that poor timing?
It's, I think it's poor timing. I'd rather have the assessment at the end of the instructional cycle instead of, you know, after a summer where kids have been away from the process. So that's part of it. And then we've, at least in Washtenaw County, with the consolidation of Ypsilanti and Willa Run Public Schools, the community actually was open to this notion of a balanced calendar and understanding the importance for the students in addressing achievement issues. So I think, you know, there will be pockets of places where schools will move towards a balanced calendar. And as you demonstrate success and people see that you can still have time off to do things in the summer as well as other times throughout the calendar, we might be able to see that shift. But it's a difficult concept for some as they're thinking about making the shift wholesale.
All right, well, you know, we have been asking people for their questions on Twitter. People are watching us online as well, and we appreciate that. So we do have a Twitter question from Monica Williams from southeast Michigan. At the center, what initiatives exist in Michigan that include students in the planning and conversations about their education? Phil, you want to take that?
We specifically aimed our community conversations at the customers of the school's industry, which is to say, students, parents, and employers. And if you think about all the fighting that's going on in Lansing about schools and everything else, usually customers of the school system aren't involved. And we aimed our conversations specifically to include students, parents, and employers. And as we looked at the demographic profile of people who participate, in age, in gender, in race, and in geography, the people who participate in our community conversations look almost exactly like the diversity of the reality of Michigan. And I was particularly interested in those conversations that reached out to students because a lot of students said, nobody's asking us what we think.
Yeah, all right. Well, we have another question here in studio. Hi, sir, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm Chuck Fellows. I'm from the Brighton area. I'm president of the Flex Tech Board of Education. And as a board, we have two responsibilities. One is, is the money there? The other, are the children learning? And my question is to Phil's original point. We spend $14 billion in the state of Michigan on education. Nationally, the United States of America spends the most money on education of any country in the world, specifically the OECD countries, 31 members. In the OECD countries, they spend 70% to 80% of their education dollars in the classroom. In the United States, we only spend 50%. My question is, where's the other $7 billion?
Well, here's a quick comment. In Michigan, the notion was that the school year was 180 days. The legislature changed the way we denominate the school year. Instead of days, it went to hours. And lots of local school boards said, well, heck, we're trying to cut a deal with the local unions, we don't have any money. The easy way to do this is knock 20 minutes off this day, 20 minutes off that week, and we can cut the deal. The net effect, and we did the research, was that the average in Michigan for the length of the school year is 165 days, translated to hours. Now, compare this with other nations. What's the standard in Europe? 200 days. What's the standard in Japan? 225. What's the standard in Korea? Almost 230. My son lives in Shanghai, where he's involved in teaching languages. He says that in China, it's 240, 250, and still they want to do more. So we expect our kids to go to school for 165 days in Michigan and compete with the rest of the world. And I think there's a relationship between the amount of time that you spend in class, precisely the question, and what you learn. And we're going to have to move on this and get with the program, otherwise our kids are going to fall behind.
I didn't want to add to that?
Well, I would just say that the numbers vary depending on where you are in the state. And so if you're in Livingston County, that number in terms of direct classroom expenditure is 60% to 65% by district, of the five in Livingston County. And if you think about the other requirements, just transportation alone, the Howell Public School District has 156 square miles. They're spending a lot of money on transportation that districts in metro Detroit that only have a few square miles don't have to spend. And so the reality, economic reality, is that there are a lot of support services for what's happening in the classroom that take up the other portion of those resources.
All right, we have another question from our Twitter followers. So why don't we go ahead and head to that? I don't have that, I don't have that actually right now. We lost that, but we so appreciate people who are watching us online right now for our conversation. You know, I think it's interesting, Phil, that you bring up a lot of those statistics and how it breaks down and how actually our classroom hours are spent as opposed to days. Do you think getting that information out to parents could change these conversations that we're having right now?
Over the long run, I believe it will. Part of the problem is that those who make the decisions about how money is allocated, whether for education or for other purposes, in the legislature, they are lagging institutions. They don't lead the public. Just as Scott said, if our parents in our district wanted to change the school calendar, we'd change it. So I think that at the end of the day, we're going to have to concentrate on providing information for parents about how schools work, about how kids get investment in their capacity, what it means to their careers, and what it means for the prosperity of the state. And when that educational message gets across, the people who make the decisions about how to align resources are going to follow.
Is that also, I guess, also looking at priorities, too? I mean, what's the most important message to try to get out right now? And you have to kind of put on the line, well, that might not be the most important thing. The most important thing right now is got to make sure that parents know what resources they have to get their kids into school and to get their kids to school every day.
Right, right. And along with that comes really creating a true value proposition around education and doing it longer. Watching Condoleezza Rida a few years ago, and she stated that the biggest threat to our national security is not bombs and missiles, but the fact that we're an illiterate nation in comparison. And so we need to invest in creating more investments in children so that that no longer exists. In Michigan, there are 70,000 jobs that we can't fill because it's more technical than the skill sets that our, that our nation and our state has right now.
It's a huge skills gap.
Okay. We've got another question from Twitter. Here it is, from Gary Nair. He says, is the Great Start Readiness Program an essential program to prepare pre-K kids for, quote, nanny state government daycare? Now, I don't know how you, who wants to answer that? Pat, you want to take a crack at that?
No. That's a term we've heard, isn't it?
Right. But it's out there. And I think that that's part of addressing what some of the feelings are about what they're hearing.
Absolutely. And to reiterate what Phil said before, this is not, our idea of preschool is not a requirement. You must attend preschool. There are a lot of parents out there that are doing an excellent job with their children and have the resources, the time, to prepare their children for school. This is a great alternative for many children. I don't believe in the nanny state. I'd like to hear some other comments. I'm sure, Scott, you've heard this a lot as well.
Well, my sense and my response would be is that most parents who have resources are actually paying to send their children to preschool.
Yeah, that's true.
And so they have that choice.
That's right.
But there are so many children in families that don't have access to those resources that the state's going to pay one way or the other. If we don't invest in the Great Start Readiness Program, we're going to pay in the cost of remediation, retention, and grade level, or in the criminal justice system. And so it's not really a nanny state. It's about saying that every child, regardless of the circumstance of their birth, deserves to have an opportunity to be successful when they enter into kindergarten. And if the people who have resources are exercising the choice to enroll their kids in a quality preschool, why shouldn't the kids who through no fault of their own are born into families that can't do that have the same opportunity?
Exactly right.
I would concur.
That's exactly it, yes.
Yeah, that is it. Families with resources can pay on average $1,600 a month for care. And that's a high-quality situation where you have credentialing of staff, higher ratios of adults to children, and it's not affordable by your average person, your average worker. Even when you come down to $800 a month, which is the average, you know, mean, you're still out of range for many who are making $7, $8 an hour to be able to send their children to those environments, right?
But what's the number of parents who are able to afford preschool for their kids? 90% of them save and spend the money to go to preschool.
To go to preschool.
So that says two kinds of things. Number one, most parents know that preschool is important. Second, we cannot have a system in which we ration investments in children.
That's correct.
Just according as whether people can afford to get their kids to preschool.
Absolutely. That's right. We're not talking daycare here, too. People confuse the two. We're not talking about, you know, warehousing children, as some people, perhaps our tweeter would say, from morning till night, five days a week, so we can create a nanny state. We're talking about preschool education, three, four days afternoons in some cases a week for kindergarten readiness.
All right. Well, as we, we only have a couple of minutes left, so let's go ahead. And I'm going to let each one of you kind of wrap up a little bit of what we've talked about here today and your focus and what people you think should take away from our discussion on early childhood. Go ahead, Scott. I'm going to start with you.
Well, I'm excited about the opportunity that Michigan will actually invest in what is probably the most important investment we can make, and that is our children and especially young children. I think that's part of the takeaway, that we would like to ensure that the legislature delivers on the governor's proposal and actually makes the investment. Secondly, it's more than just the quality preschool experience. That's one piece, but it's really the entire system. And providing support for childrens and children and family from cradle to career, not in a nanny state approach, but in a sense that we want to help ensure that they're all successful. It's vital to Michigan's future. Phil talks about having a prosperous state. This investment's critical, but it's a part of that larger conversation. And so I hope that people will continue to engage as we work to ensure that all children have an opportunity to be successful in the system. This investment in the Great Start Readiness Program is a really important first step. We've known that it pays significant dividends, and I'm excited that that could really become a reality.
Okay. Pat, go ahead.
Well, of course, I, what he said.
What he said, Pat?
What he said is great.
Oh, no, you can't, you don't get away that easy. You don't get away that easy.
Well, I just think it is so encouraging to hear these discussions going on, not only at the state level, but in Lansing, but among people like us. And it's very encouraging to me to see business leaders, you know, raising the flag about this. And I'm hoping that everyone that is watching this and here in our audience will bring this back to their own communities and find out what's going on and learn more to spread the word. This is an amazing economic infrastructure issue we have. This is as vital as roads, as water, as sewer. This creates our Michigan in 15 years from now. The other thing I want people to take away is unlike some other things, like building a bridge, and believe me, I'm all about that. We're building one in our community right now, this is not a quick fix. And that is one of the selling points that is missing from this, that we'll never be able to say, you know, okay, your child's going to go to preschool, and tomorrow, things will be better. This is a long-range.
No guarantees.
This is an investment, a long-range investment. And those are sometimes more difficult to sell than, you know, the infrastructure program that, you know, we'll build it and tomorrow, tomorrow will be better. So we need to keep that in mind.
All right. Denise, go ahead.
Sure. I think I would leave that we know that high-quality, early-learning experiences really can change a child's life. I mean, not only helps prepare them to be ready and successful at kindergarten and beyond, but has resounding, long-term positive effects for our community. And so with that in mind, knowing that even if you decide to leave as a parent, have your child and homeschool them, and there was other opportunities, to take advantage of finding out what's appropriate to lay those foundations. So those first three years are critical to laying foundation for future success. And so it's the partnership between parents and the educator. And so the last thing I would say is that we need to think very intentionally about how we support our educators to become the very best to ensure that we're preparing our children and our future.
Okay. Phil, last word from you.
Let's be tough-minded about this. Resources are scarce. We're talking about taxpayers' money. We're trying to figure out how best to allocate it to the place where it gets the greatest return on investment. The data are very clear. Investing in early childhood gets you returns of eight to one. You don't have as many people getting into trouble. You don't have kids who are repeating grades. You have kids who graduate from school. You have kids who don't get into criminality. You have kids who have safe and steady marriages. All of the social costs added up. When you look at investing $1 in early childhood, gets you the return of eight. And I defy anybody in Lansing to show me public expenditures which get the people of Michigan an eight-to-one return on investment.
All right. And we'll have to end it there. I'd like to thank the panelists for joining me for a great conversation on early childhood. We are not done yet. In the next hour, we're going to look at new ways to educate kids, plus a look at the state's Education Achievement Authority. We'll have a new panel, so make sure you send us your questions. We had a few moments to sit down with Governor Rick Snyder last week to talk about education in Michigan. Go ahead and take a look.
It's great to be with you.
So how would you describe the state of K-12 education here in our state?
Well, Kristi, I wouldn't even start there. I call it P-20, prenatal through lifelong learning, because I think that's where we need to get to. But in terms of K-12, we're making some major improvements. There's great, hard-working people, teachers, administrators in the system, but we need to show better results and more outcome-based results focusing on student growth. And that's where I'm excited about some of the programs, like teacher effectiveness we're working on in terms of having a program to help teachers be more effective, not in a threatening way, but in a positive way. Student-centered learning is an exciting model. So there's many good things going on.
We talk about that education is about the children, but it does come down to money and to funding. And we know that a lot of districts have long-term liabilities that they're trying to take care of. How do we balance out paying for that along with funding our kids' education?
Well, that's a major initiative we've done at the state level. We've increased funding for educations over the time I've been governor for K-12. It's not been easy. And if you look at, we're putting a lot more resources into funding retirement plans because that was a huge cost that we're going to school districts. So although the per pupil foundation allowance may not be really increasing in a way people would like to see, we're taking away another huge obligation from these school districts by helping them fund much more of the retirement costs. And those dollars will end up helping in the classroom.
So the per pupil is bumped up a little bit, about 2%. How is that going so far in talking to legislators? Do you think you're going to be able to get that through for the budget?
I hope so because I think it's a very responsible answer in terms of the long term. And we need to keep doing that over the next few years because if we can continue a path of making sure we're putting resources in a smart way in terms of funding these obligations, we're setting up a success model for the long term that eventually, in the future years, thinking about a decade or two, it just becomes a fabulous model because we would have taken care of legacy problems that we ignored for far too long.
Let's talk about early childhood education and those little four-year-olds who need that education more than anything. You've talked about taking $130 million and starting to get more kids educated at that level. We even heard the president talk about it in his State of the Union address. Why has it taken so long for us to address early childhood education in Michigan?
Fair question. Because if you can help kids get started at the early age, it makes a huge difference. So that's why I focused in, even coming into office or campaigning on it as a topic. We didn't have the resources before because of all our budget challenges. Now we're doing, getting back on track and starting to do well enough, we can make an investment like that. Because our Great Start Program to help those early childhood kids, we were leaving out about 29,000 kids. We were spending about $100 million a year, if you go back to the last decade on average. So if you think about it, we're going to more than double our commitment over the next two years to early childhood and hopefully provide an opportunity for those, all those kids, including those 29,000 that haven't been eligible to get in the program. And that makes a big difference because there've been studies to show how many grades did they have to repeat for kids that weren't in the program.
Let's talk a little bit about the Education Achievement Authority at the state level. You want to expand the reach. Some critics have said, whoa, that could take away some local control. How would you explain the EAA, the successes that maybe it's had, and how you want to expand?
Well, the successes are exciting. I've made the tour more than once. I love going on the tour. It gets me all fired up because you go in and just talk to the kids. I always talk to the teachers and administrators, but the most exciting part is talk to the kids. They're doing student-centered learning, where the kids are defining their own future in learning, and they're excited about learning. And you talk to them about years before, how was school going? It wasn't working well for them. Now they're fired up about what they're learning and doing in school. That's fabulous. So it's got a bright future. And the goal of the EAA isn't to be something that's, goal is not to take over schools, it's to deal with the most persistently failing schools and allow districts to focus on their other schools so they can succeed, help places that need the most help. And then the other part is be this place of innovation. And I view it as, a lot of the cool stuff they're doing, you don't need to be part of the EAA to do that. Any school district can do those same things, and I encourage them to do that so the EAA can take those ideas and learn. So I view it as a great place to innovate, going back and forth with other school districts in our state, and a place to deal on a limited basis with some of the most failing places in our state.
Do you think you have a hard sell job on that? Because I know that back in the fall, when this was heading towards, through the legislative session, you had a lot of pushback from a lot of large districts that said, no, we don't want to see any expansion of this because they were afraid that it would get into what funding that they have.
Yeah, well, a couple of things. One is, other items got included in that bill through the normal process that were more concerning. I want to stay focused more on the core of what it's all about. And we've talked about limiting the growth until there's actually more results, and I'm happy to do that. The more important thing is, let's get it going. It's showing great success. And again, there's nothing to stop a district that may have challenges to say, why don't they adopt some of the same approaches and learn from one another and do it that way? It's about people working together rather than saying, well, I'm different and I don't like it. Let's say how we're different, but we can work together to make it even better.
We know that education is a passion of yours, and we are so glad that you joined us to talk a little bit about it. We appreciate it.
That's been great. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And the governor is a strong supporter of early childhood education and also favors some alternative education options. One of those options has become quite a buzzword in Lansing and across the state. It's choice. And discussions about choice have people lining up on both sides of the issue. Take a look.
We've heard a lot lately about school choice. In most cases, it means students attending a different school in their district or choosing to attend a charter school. Charter schools are state-supported public schools under the state constitution, operating under a charter contract issued by a public authorizing body, usually a university, community college, or intermediate school district. You may have also heard of the Education Achievement Authority, a new statewide school system that will assume operation of the lowest 5% of performing schools in the state that are not achieving satisfactory results on a redesign plan or under an emergency manager. Currently, this new system is operating in Detroit. Fifteen Detroit public schools opened in September as part of the EAA. But what do the people in this state have to say about choice? In its recent survey, the Center for Michigan asked the question, how important is it to improving student learning by expanding school choice? About a third of community conversation participants and half of those participating in phone polls called it crucial or important. These residents thought it would lead to competition, which would in turn lead to higher education quality and create more opportunities for better or different types of learning. Some of the people surveyed simply thought of choice as a fundamental freedom, especially for families living in areas with poor-performing public schools. It's that word, "choice," that makes educators who are part of the current system, well, a bit nervous.
Choice is a good thing. We all want choice, but we have to make sure that the choices we put out there for parents and children are choices with high quality. And we have to make sure that those choices are operated with full transparency, especially in how public money is used. And most important, we have to make sure that the choices we're creating outside the system of comprehensive K-12 education do not kill off the choices we have inside that system.
And when you talk about choice, many of those surveyed would like choices in more than just what building or district. They want a bigger choice of electives and more vocational programs, as well as more focus on what students will do after graduation, better vocational education for those not heading to college, more career planning, and prompting students at early ages to begin thinking about life and career options. Another hot-button issue these days is online learning. The center asked people how important it is to expand online learning. Only a third of those surveyed called it somewhat important, and just about a quarter said it was not very important. The push for extending the school calendar was also a topic the center asked about in this survey. Just under half of those polled called the longer school year crucial or important. One of the most common comments was the difficulty students have retaining or remembering what they learned once summer vacation starts. To that end, some districts have experimented with year-round school or summer educational programs. In November of last year, a draft proposal of the governor's Michigan Public Education Finance Project proposed encouraging year-round schools. The proposal called for staggering the 180-day school year over 12 months instead of the current nine months. This issue will likely be discussed again this year, and more ideas for changing the school year will be revealed.
And you are watching the Future of Education Town Hall. Today, we're talking about education in Michigan and what the citizens of our state want to see changed to make the public education system better. If you'd like to join the conversation, find us on Twitter at CenterForMI. Use the hashtag #FutureEdMI. Joining us now for our second hour of discussion, talking about education alternatives and new initiatives to help our kids learn and achieve, we have Amber Odianno, the Executive Director of Education Trust Midwest, nonprofit school advocacy group. Also joining us, Tyrone Winfrey, the Chief of Staff of the Education Achievement Authority. Also with us today is Tammy Jones, the Director of External Affairs at the Detroit Parent Network, and David Campbell, the Superintendent of Livingston Educational Service Agency. Thanks so much for joining us for our second panel here today.
Thank you.
First of all, before we start off, I'd like to ask Amber and Tammy, tell us a little bit about your organizations and how you're working with education in Michigan. Amber, let me start with you.
Sure. So the Education Trust opened more than 20 years ago in Washington, DC as one of the So the Education Trust opened more than 20 years ago in Washington, DC, as one of the first organizations in the country to be focused on giving a voice for children, particularly for vulnerable students in the US, in big, big, big decisions about education, from budgets to public policies to standards around educational practices that are really focused around improving student achievement. And so much of the time in Lansing or in Washington, DC, that voice is missing from the table. And so we opened in Michigan about three years ago to ensure that that vulnerable student's voice is at the table in big decisions at the statewide level.
Okay. And Tammy, go ahead and tell us about the organization a little bit.
Absolutely. Detroit Parent Network is an agency founded roughly 10 years ago, and our mission is to develop powerful parents and primary caregivers to get the best education possible for their children. So very simple, very direct mission. We believe that when you transform parents, you actually transform the city to be a better place to raise and educate children.
Empower.
Absolutely. So we focus a lot on giving parents information, helping them develop their leadership skills, creating opportunities for parents to have decision-making power and voice over the education that their children are getting, and making sure that parents really have the opportunity as one of the few players at the education reform table to be advocates for children. The reality is, with teachers' unions, with school administrators, with the bean counters, everybody comes to the table with an agenda that may or may not prioritize children at any point in time. We can guarantee you that every parent wants what's best for their child, and so that will always be the agenda that we carry.
All right. Okay, well, let's start off, I love this, people say they want to improve education in Michigan. It's a great statement, and I think that we've all said it at one time or another. So I'm going to ask each one of you, and I'm going to start with you, Tyrone, what does that mean to you, when we need to improve education in Michigan?
When you look at improving education in the state of Michigan, you got, I'm reminded of a statement, if nothing changes, nothing changes. And when you look at our children, we should not just look at them in the year 2013. Where do we want to see them in the year 2020, 2023, 10 years from today? And when you talk about changing education in the state of Michigan, we have to work with them where they are to help them to get to another place. And when you look at what we're doing with the Education Achievement Authority of Michigan, we're looking at how a student, not proficient, but how they can grow from one grade level or one instructional level to another. So when you talk about changing education in the state of Michigan, it has to be student-centered.
David, let me ask you, improving the state of education in Michigan, what does that mean to you?
It means so many different things. There's a gentleman named Mark Tucker, who's an internationally famous school reformer. And what he's looking at is two fundamental things, is the quality of the teacher, the effectiveness of the teacher, and then the governmental structures that are set up to support the system. And what he would argue is that many of the systems in states, ours included, are so decentralized, the power structures, that it's very easy to cast blame elsewhere. And he argues for a more logical system, a P-20-type system, which I believe Scott Menzel earlier in the panel, and also Phil Power was getting at that, a system of support for human capital, as Phil was calling it.
Amber, how would you address improving education in Michigan?
Sure. So, you know, in Michigan now, for about 15 years, we've had a, there's been a big focus on governance. And through that time period, the state has really not improved outcomes in kids' learning. In fact, we've continued to decline. We were in the top third, then we were in the top 50% on the national assessment. We're now in the bottom third among all states. And so clearly, simply by focusing on governance is not really working for what's really best for students. As Dave mentioned, the most important predictor of student achievement is classroom instruction. It's the quality of the teaching that's happening in the classroom for kids. And I think in the Center for Michigan study, that really resonated with parents. Parents, we sort of know intuitively how important our teachers are, but the research bears that out, too. And that's why our organization has put a big focus on, on working on improving the quality of teaching and also school leadership at the building level, also a really big, really big predictor of how well a school is going to do in teaching its kids.
Okay. Tammy, improving?
So I think, from a parent perspective, the bigger question is, what do we want, right, when our kids are leaving high school? What do we want them to be equipped with? And so we really think of, how can we get our kids to be productive, responsible, and caring citizens? Ones who are able to provide a good living for their families when they're grown up, and ones who are able to give back into the community in a way that increases everybody's quality of life. So when we're talking about improving the quality of education, it's about making sure that kids have access to that, whether it's in school, at home, or in the community. It's also about making sure that the opportunities they have are equitable, or making sure that there's quality options open to everybody, so that every child, regardless of what family they're born into, regardless of the zip code, has an opportunity to succeed.
All right, let's jump in and start talking about some of the things that I think all of you mentioned, and that would be teacher education and performance. And let me start with you, Amber, because the Center for Michigan, when they did their study, they asked people in terms of how they would see improvement with schools, and people said, well, we would like to help teachers more, and we would like to get more help for them, more education for them. How crucial is teacher performance tied to kids' performance? I'm going to start with you, Amber.
Yeah, I mean, it's fundamentally important. There have, there's been more than a decade now of research that's shown that teaching qualities, actually, it's more important predictor than a school's zip code, which, when you think about it, is really profound. You know, we are living in an era in America that we're living in a really socio-economically segregated time, and often where kids live and the school that they go to and the poverty level in that community often has a huge influence on, on how much that child's going to learn in school, the quality of those schools. And so one of the ways that we can really provide equitable outcomes for kids is to ensure that all kids, no matter who they are, are getting access to an effective teacher.
So David, let me ask you, what are teachers telling you? Are they sharing with you some concerns about how they can maybe be more effective with children in the classroom? And then are they concerned about being tied to their kid's success?
Well, absolutely. The, yes, they're concerned about being tied to the outcomes, because a lot of the systems in terms of the assessment data, we're working on the reliability on that, and we're not quite there as a nation yet. A lot of the emphasis out of the federal government with the Race to the Top Initiative is to study how to measure, in a quantitative manner, the effectiveness of instruction. And that's never been done before. And so it's the quality of the tests, the fairness of the assessments. We have laws in place related to teacher evaluation that are, that we are working through, as Amber could speak to this very well, in terms of the caliber of the assessments. And teachers are stressed out about that. Teaching, I would say, is harder than ever. When I started teaching 25 years ago, I don't think it was as complicated, because frankly, we didn't think it was that important as a nation. And right now, we know that our nation's survival depends on the quality of the instruction. And so there's a lot of pressure, probably more than some people signed up for.
So are you seeing teacher burnout, then? Are you seeing people say, forget it, I can't do the right thing, I can't teach to the test, or the kids aren't learning other things that they need to learn? And are you seeing them burned out?
There is definitely some of that. There's also some people who, you know, due to some of the reform efforts the last couple of years, there's been a lot of changes this last two years in particular. The tenure reform piece certainly has teachers concerned about the stability and their, you know, can I keep my job? Can I meet these, these high rigorous standards? And schools are concerned about, are we providing them enough support? You want to be fair to somebody. If you're going to raise the standard, then let's, let's give them the training. Because the training that I got 25 years ago to be a teacher is not the skill set that teachers need nowadays.
And what would the training involve that you would like to see?
Well, I think a greater emphasis on technology, but not exclusively. I think technology is a part of the answer, but if we take the human element out of teaching and learning, I think we're going to lose a generation of kids. And we can get into this more later, but the online learning is a component of good instruction. A lot of kids' brains are being retooled, reformed because of technology. In a way, we've got a generation, probably ourselves included, that are far more ADD, Attention Deficit Disorder, than previous generations, because we have our handheld devices and we're constantly changing direction. We've got our clickers for TV. We don't stop and pay attention to things very long as a society. That makes it harder to teach. And we've got a greater percentage of kids who lack that internal self-control, discipline is what we used to call it, that, to be able to pay attention. And many kids are, the virtual learning can meet that need. It's typically most effective when kids have that attention and they can stay focused on something and not click over to Facebook real quickly. And so it can work for motivated kids, but one also must ask, what doesn't work for motivated kids? And is that the best? Is that what the top-performing nations of the world are doing? Are they moving into the virtual learning? When I read about Finland and Singapore, I'm not reading about virtual learning, but it absolutely has a place. It has a place. Solomon Con, the Con Academy is, there's some outstanding instruction there, and students can get their instruction, you know, maybe you flip the classroom, they get their instruction at home through Solomon Con, the Con Academy, and then they come into school, and then they discuss it. Because it's that, it's that act of participation, the discussing of information that really increases the retention in the brain. You've got to work with the information, not just read it and regurgitate it.
David, you have all my notes, because I have all those things written down that we're supposed to talk about in about 30 minutes from now. But this is great, and this gets me really excited about the conversation, because there's so much to grapple with. I do want to step back a little bit, and I want to go to you, Tyrone, and I want you to tell us about how the Education Achievement Authority, how in these schools now that are operating, the 15 schools in Detroit, how that teacher-student relationship is and how they reflect student achievement and the teachers right now.
Well, first of all, with the Education Achievement Authority, we have to go back to December of 2009. The state legislature passed a bill that became law and was enacted on January 4, 2010, under our former Governor Grant home, that said that the state would operate what is considered the lowest-performing school or underperforming schools. And that was in, also in work in trying to get the Race to the Top grants. That law, as I see it set on the books, it also said that the state would have a reformed school officer and a reformed school district. When Governor Snyder came in office, and you go to June 20th of 2011, that's when the Education Achievement Authority was formulated, was instituted with him and Emergency Manager Roy Roberts in Detroit. And the basic thing was to make sure that we had a district where we could have schools that were underperforming, and make sure we take those low-performing and make them high-performing schools. We're doing just that. When you look at individualized student-centered learning, where students are basically, as I talked about earlier, looking at where they are and how we can get them to a certain level, and making sure that those students are in a setting where they're getting the attention from the teacher. When I sat in classes years ago at Cass Tech in Detroit, the teacher stood up and talked to the whole. Half the class got the information, half didn't. Because my last name was W, or because I was tall, I sat in the back. And so therefore, sometimes I was afraid to ask the question. But now, when you talk about individualized student-centered learning, we're talking about utilizing technology, a teacher, as well as maybe a teacher assistant, to help that student get to that next level.
How do you measure the success or the non-success of what's happening in the EAA right now?
Well, one of the things, we are taking the MEEP tests along with other state school districts, but we look at performance series testing. That testing helps us to measure where students are and help them to get to that next level. I was talking to a student at a school recently, seven years old, just learning their alphabet. Now, can you imagine that? Most times, we're teaching, we're talking and reading to students before they're born and so forth, and helping them to play, you know, playing classical music and doing different things to help them to get to a certain level. But with our kids, we're finding out that they were so behind, and even our high school students that were tested. And also, before we tested the students, we assessed every school in the EAA. We looked, we had to do the report card on every school. We looked at proficiency in math, proficiency in English. We looked at the graduation rates for high schools. We looked at the dropout rates. We looked at every facet of that school before that school was instituted into the EAA.
Amber, is this EAA model something that you think should be instituted in other places?
You mean outside of Detroit?
Mm-hmm.
I think it's a good question. I think, you know, the EAA was developed to be focused on the state's lowest performing 5% of schools. And that was the intent, and I think that's the, that's the group of schools that it makes sense to have it represented this time. We don't really know yet, you guys are doing great work. We don't really know, have comparative data yet on how it's doing, though, and it's going to take, it's going to take some time. And so I think, you know, there's been a lot of debate in Lansing about whether this should be expanded, how rapidly should it expand? And I think for now, it makes sense at the lowest 5%. And, you know, I mean, I think we want to see how it does, right? And we want to see how it does compared to other districts. Because, you know, as Tammy will tell you, parents want to see how schools are doing compared to one another. They want to, if we're going to talk about choice, we have to, we have to have good data and really be able to tell, like, what are quality choices? What are high-performing choices, right? Otherwise, choices, it's hollow. I mean...
So where do, where do parents get that good quality data? How do they make those choices? And how important is it for parents to have that kind of relationship with their school and with their teachers, their kids' teachers?
Those, I think, are all incredibly challenging questions that we grapple with on a daily basis. The reality is, you know, the school system that we grew up in, it doesn't exist anymore. Just assuming that you buy a house in a good neighborhood means you have a good school nearby to go to, isn't true. We have, the reality is, we have a marketplace of schools now. And the question is, when we have charter schools, EAA, Detroit public schools, private schools, virtual schools, all vying for our kids' attention, where do we find real apples-to-apples comparisons? So that we can really say, this is not about where the money is, this is not about who's getting contracts, this is about who's delivering on our kids' education. So we partner a lot with Excellent Schools Detroit in being able to get this information in a way that's digestible for parents. When we first launched the...
It's overwhelming.
It absolutely is.
I looked at your site and Excellent Schools Detroit, it can be very overwhelming.
It absolutely is. I mean, we know, when we started off, we said, okay, we'll just keep it simple, we'll look at MEEP scores, we'll look at ACT scores in high school and graduation rates, right? And even that became really complicated very quickly. And then the parents realistically said, well, I need to know more about this school before I decide that's a place, I'm going to take my most valuable asset and leave them there. And so then we started doing site visits, where we actually had parents and community members going out into schools to be able to look at the environment and look at the school culture as best as they can assess, to say, is this a good fit? And then we have surveys that are being done out of University of Chicago of our teachers and our students, being able to provide a lot more information around the climate of that school, to figure out, is this a school that's on track to improve or not? Now, the reality is, in the city of Detroit at least, we have far too few high-performing options. And so this is something we have to continually work on, to not only identify those high-performing options for parents, so they understand the subset that they're working with, so they can figure out the one that best fits their child's needs and interests, but also then how do we make sure that those schools that are performing get an opportunity to open up more, and those schools that aren't are stopped from opening any further.
David, let me ask you this. This might be a simple question, or maybe too simplified. Is choice a good thing?
It's a great question, I think. And philosophically, I would say yes, because, and I'll simplify.
Why do I feel a but is coming somewhere?
McDonald's produces a better product at a cheaper price because there's a Burger King across the street. Philosophically, I think there's, there's a lot of truth to that. And I do think that the multitude of options and choices that have opened up for the kids of Michigan the last 20 years have made Michigan one of the leaders in the choice movement. Charter schools, there's about 300 charter schools, I believe, in the state now, full-blown schools of choice in most parts of the state. The homeschooling opportunities have expanded, so I think those options are more viable. The whole virtual learning, there's so many options now. And I do have to, and there's not much of a but. The but is, if choice is the answer, then we wouldn't be in the bottom third in performance, because we've been a high-choice state for about 20 years. That's not, that's not to be taken as an anti-choice, plus, I'm just not sure it's the answer. It can empower parents, it can get parents to be more involved if they have choice. I think that's a positive. It also creates some competition. I think it's woken up what some may call a stagnant bureaucracy over the last 20 years. And so I do see some, some positives to that. A little bit of a negative, I remember serving as a high school principal, and at times when seeing parents pull their child out so quickly, it's like, give me an opportunity. Don't just pull them out and take them to the next school. Let's, let's work through this. One of the panelists earlier talked about grit, and that kids need to know how to work through a problem. Don't just bail on us so quickly. If you're dissatisfied with a teacher, let's sit down with that teacher. Let's try to work through that. Let's try to find the solution. And teach kids to be resilient, to work through an issue, to talk it through, maybe involving the principal if necessary, and not just bailing very quickly. So I'm not anti-choice. I think that, but I also think that I've seen, in my experience, just too many people quitting, giving up. And I've heard it from charter school administrators, too. They'll enroll in the charter, and then, and then maybe by November, oh, they don't like that, and then they bounce over to another charter. We've got to teach some resilience to kids as well.
Amber, how would you, yeah, go ahead.
So I think, you know, the, the idea of choice is, is, it's very appealing. As Americans, we love our choices, right? We love going to the grocery store, and there's 60 different varieties of rice to choose from. And, you know, we, it's one of the things that we really get to enjoy in our country. Competition alone, though, doesn't necessarily produce high-quality choices. So using the burger analogy, where I live, there are, there have been lots of different fast food joints, all serving hamburgers. Wendy's, Burger King, McDonald's, if you live in an area where your children are obese because they don't have access to high-quality nutritious food, right, and healthy food, opening one more burger joint on that strip is not going to give them a better, more nutritious food. And that's true for schooling, too. So without any standards of performance for the expansion of charter schools and other kinds of choice options, we're just providing more burgers for kids that can't get a fresh vegetable to save their life, an intellectual vegetable, right?
Go ahead, Tyrone.
But at the same time, when we talk about competition, we're talking about hamburgers, but look at our university systems. As Dan Quisenberry would say, people come from all over the world and study, and come to our universities because of the competition. They don't come to our K-12, K-12 systems, but because of a University of Michigan, or Michigan State, or Eastern, or Western, or whatever, we are competitive. So, we should have that same type of competition at the K-12 as well. So, I don't want to take it off of hamburgers, McDonald's, and Burger King, that's one thing.
We're getting towards lunch. I'm getting a little hungry, I gotta honest.
I'm looking at her education.
Okay, now, I want to ask you real quick, Tyrone, before we go to the Q and A session, because the EAA is now part of a choice that a lot of Detroit Public Schools students have. Talk to me about what you perceive to be some of the, maybe the misinformation that's out there about the EAA?
Well, the misinformation is that it's a failing school district, and we just want to take over Detroit schools, we want to take over the schools throughout the state or whatever. We're basically saying that here we have underperforming schools. Let's get into those schools, clean those schools up, make them high-performing. If they want to go back to their school district, fine. If they want to stay with us, fine. But when you talk about individualized learning in the early panel, we did the research, too. We're so behind as a state, 165, 170 days per year for education, when countries around the world are averaging 220, 230. So, we said, we're going to give a longer school year, 210 days, 220 days for our students. And the main thing, the misinformation that I'm so, have problems with, is that the individuals in this state help plan the EAA. The Center for Michigan went around and did community strategic conversations. We did the same thing. We talked to faith-based leaders. We talked to business leaders, educational leaders, community leaders. And basically, they told us, we want longer school days. We want individualized learning. We went to Lansing, we went to Flint, we went all around the state with these conversations. And also, we asked them, what are your core beliefs on education? What does 21st century education look like in terms of an animal or place? And people were drawing tigers and lions, and said it has to be strong, it has to be resilient, and so forth. Then we told them to write a mission statement for the EAA. And they did that, and we put in our strategic plan. Then our chancellor, Dr. John Coveney, said, well, wait a minute. We haven't talked to our customers. Tyrone, I want you to do a workshop with kids. I was going to do a two-hour workshop at UofL Detroit or whatever. He said, no, I want a two-day summit. We did a summit at Michigan State University, February 3rd and 4th of last year. We called it the Super Youth Leadership Summit because it was Super Bowl weekend. We brought 80-plus students up to Michigan State, and after they toured the university, we got into whether they want to see in a school district. We did a weather forecast to describe your school or your school district in terms of weather terms and degrees and so forth. You would be blown away by what kids told us. So, the Education Achievement Authority, people say it's just something that's been forced on them. They actually helped write our plan.
All right. Well, I know a lot of people have questions about the EAA and have questions for all of our panel about online learning, extended school days. We're going to get into it all, so let's go ahead and start. Hi, go ahead and give us your name.
Morning. My name's Tony Wright. I'm a high school teacher for Warren Consolidated Schools.
Go ahead, Tony.
Got a question. It brings up a couple of points that the panel has already talked about. You've both mentioned lack of consistency for the school year. You mentioned the EAA wants to increase the number of school days. You've mentioned that parents leave school districts without giving it a chance. About five years ago, the requirement of seat time was foregone. Students no longer have to show up for any classes. There is no mandate for students to show up to school. My question lies in this. The loss of seat time directly affects at-risk students the most. They're the ones that don't show up, and they're the ones that need the teacher nurturing, and they're the ones that need the added care. Is there a plan to reinforce or reinstate that mandates so students show up the 160 days, or the 210 days, or whatever days, instead of just, well, make your seventh call home, make your, you know, make your multiple calls home, and if they show up, fantastic. If they don't, they don't, and that's their choice. I think that, you brought up a good point, that choice is an option, but I think that the grit, the resiliency piece of the kids showing up every day and doing what they need to do to take part in the technological standpoints, to take part in the teacher-nurturing process, is a piece to it. Child of mine has 45 days in a first semester, and I called home almost 10 times. That child's not going to succeed. And it's tragic, because I think that that should be a piece of the argument as well.
Who wants to comment on that?
Well, I'll say this. Even though we can mandate kids go to school and be, and seat waivers and all that, or seat time, but my main thing is, I talk to students, they want a school that relates to them more. They want, a lot of them say, school is boring. School doesn't meet my needs, or whatever. So, what are we doing that not only mandate that they be in those seats, but what are we doing to help them to be in those seats because they want to be in those seats?
Do I also hear him coming back to parents, and that there is a parental role here in making sure that a kid comes to school?
Absolutely. I mean, I think it's actually, it's twofold, at least. One is, the reality is, seat time with an ineffective instructor, that's not helping anybody. So, seat time by itself isn't an end, right? You can have somebody sit in a seat and not learn a darn thing, and that's not helping anybody. The other piece of it is really saying, okay, around parents, parents absolutely have a responsibility around setting expectations in their home. And at Detroit Parent Network, we're very intentional about lifting up that parents have skin in the skin, right? That we have a responsibility about things that we need to do. The reality is, in Detroit Public Schools traditionally, it's been several weeks, if not months, before they've hit the mark they need to, to get the federal funds, because they don't have the right average daily attendance marks, right? Well, we've seen vast improvement, and that has been parents and schools working together in partnership. And I do believe that the more we can do around setting expectations at home, it's not about, most or many, many parents in Detroit actually had a really crappy experience at school, right? And even our CEO got expelled from numerous Detroit Public High Schools, right? So, in light of that, then, what are you creating for parents to be able to really sink into with their kids? And what you're saying is, we have this high expectation as parents of our kids, and we're going to ask them every day, regardless of our own preconceptions around how things are, we're going to ask them every day, how is school going, and try to connect with our teacher. But there has to be return on the other side. The school has to be invested in our children the same way we are, and they have to be invested in the partnership with parents to actually move kids to the next level.
But the schools have to be engaging, and that's what we're seeing with the EAA. When we did our studies, we went around the nation. I was in a school in DeKalb County, Georgia. I'd never seen students so engaged in a classroom. You had five students on a smartboard, five students on laptop, and the teacher was not the sage on the stage, so to speak. The teacher was the facilitator, and the kids were happy to come to school, and that's what we need. We can get with the parents all along, but we've got to have to making sure that student wants to be there.
Okay. Real quick, Amber, go ahead.
So, the teacher here, thank you for your comment. You raise a really good point, though, in that it's a question of what's the state's responsibility in terms of what are the standards that we have for our schools and for our kids? And he asked if there's a plan in place to rethink that. No, there's not. And in fact, I think that we're moving in the opposite direction. You know, there are proposals and ideas out there to allow even eight-year-olds to decide whether or not he or she wants to stay home and learn something online. And I think we've got to really think hard about what's best for the kids, what's best for students, right? I mean, like, those are not decisions that should be put in the hands of children, right? Those are parental, and those are also state responsibilities about what we expect in terms of schools, and what we know based on decades of research on what actually helps kids improve in learning, right? And generally speaking, saying to them, kind of go with what works for you, do what you want. I know that wouldn't have worked for me. I mean, I was a really rebellious teenager. If I could have, if somebody said, hey, you don't want to come to school for half the day, I wouldn't have gone to school for half the day. But if I wanted to graduate, and I wanted to go on to college, and I had to be there, then I was going to be there. So, I think, you know, as a society, we have responsibility to say, here are the expectations that we have. We know what works for kids. Other states around the country are improving student learning, and we should be thinking about what they're doing and using those ideas here.
All right, let's go to this next-
Could I please?
Oh, go ahead, David, real quick.
Employers need reliable, dependable employees. And if we allow students to pick and choose when they go to school in this virtual environment, are we setting them up for failure when they're 18, 20, 22 years old? I think you raise a great point. No, there's not a plan to move back to a little more traditional model. I think Tyrone also has a great point, too. Learning has to be engaging. You have to try to create an environment kids would want to come to. The truth is in the middle. I don't think it's a mandate, and I don't think that, you know, teachers can solve everything. The amount of stress that they're under and the challenge that they're facing, it wouldn't be fair to hold a teacher accountable for a student's performance when they're missing 60 days of school.
And in the center study, online learning wasn't very popular among the respondents. All right, let's go ahead with this next question.
The Center for, I'm Judy Cunningham. I'm a Detroit teacher, retired Detroit teacher. And the Center for Michigan Studies said two things I thought that were very interesting, that parents and citizens of Michigan said that they wanted less emphasis on online learning, and they wanted more support and education for educators. But I think that's counter to the national reform direction right now, funded by, pushed by Alec and Gates and them to have more online learning, sell technology to the schools, and to go to uncertified teachers. So, my question is for the panel, you know, why do schools who are persistently low-achieving, yet inexperienced, uncertified, and untrained, stay up?
It is a civil rights issue, really. I mean, the quality of teachers, there's a lot of evidence that shows that higher-poverty schools have disproportionate numbers of teachers that are uncertified. They haven't been certified in the subject that they're supposed to teach in. So, we have art teachers teaching algebra, and is there any wonder that the kids don't learn as much because the teacher doesn't teach those subjects as well? And high-poverty schools also have much higher percentages of ineffective teachers. All of the research over the last decade has shown that. So, I think, I mean, I think you raised some good points about what are our expectations and what are our standards for all kids, right? So that it's not just the kids in Birmingham that are getting the best teachers, that we know are delivering the best instruction for kids.
The top-performing nations of the world, such as Finland and Singapore, have very rigorous standards to become a teacher. That's something that has to be addressed. Center for Michigan report also cited that. And it's nice to see the Michigan public tuned into the educational research, which is the sharpest people. And I'm not just talking high IQ, I'm also talking high EQ. Your people skills, the emotional quotient, can you connect with people? We need top-level people teaching students now, because it is harder than ever due to what they're coming from. And so, that means we need to be looking at starting salaries, particularly in the areas that are shortage areas. Math teachers, science teachers, special education teachers, world languages, counselors, administrators. Those are the areas where there's an acute shortage of people, where there's a glut of PE teachers, elementary teachers. And somehow, we have to look at the compensation structures to, in order to get us where we need to go, in my opinion.
And I want to say, I agree with you. Because when you look at Finland, you've got to look at the salaries and what they, how they value their teachers.
Yes.
But also, when you look at Finland and other countries, you've got to look at how they support their teachers as well.
Yes.
Not only to prepare them to get in that classroom, but how they support, to help those students, teachers all along.
Yes.
All right, go ahead. Hi, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Lois Gibbons from the Michigan Jump Start Coalition, and I'm an educational consultant and former teacher in the state. According to a 2012 study that Visa did, 93% of American parents have suggested that personal finance education be taught and be a required course for high school students. My question is, in a day and age of this economic mess, if you will, why is it that we're not spending time teaching something like Tyrone had alluded to, relevant to students' education, when there's so many wonderful resources that are online and exciting and innovative and interactive? Why are we not teaching self-sufficiency to every child in the state?
David, you want to tackle that?
Well, I thought Scott's answer in the last panel was outstanding, where even starting at the early childhood level, they're looking, is it share, spend, or save were the three options? I think that's outstanding. It gets to that self-discipline piece, too. I mean, ultimately, spending patterns, it's a result of, do you have the self-discipline to say no to that thing that you want?
Is there any curriculum in the works like that in your district at all?
Well, the state opened up a nice window a few years ago with the Michigan Merit Curriculum, where there was a raising of the math graduation requirements. And then, there was a little bit of tweak there after a year or so, correct me if I'm wrong, anybody, where they said, you know, the personal finance could count as a math credit. And so, a lot of schools are teaching personal finance, probably in that junior, senior year, which is probably a pretty appropriate place to do. Why math instruction has moved away from that, I'm not the best person to speak to it, but a lot of it has to do with the importance of teaching critical thinking skills, deep-level thinking. And honestly, personal finance is not deep, critical thinking skills. It's simpler math, and that's why it's not lined up well with the curriculum standards, which are about critical thinking skills.
Okay. Hi, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Chandra Moore. I'm an architect in the city of Detroit that specializes in creating spaces for youth. My question is, one out of three employees are concerned about their child every day when they are at work. So, is there any type of collaboration that you guys are doing, not only for early childhood, but for those that are in kindergarten, first grade, for that after-school care that can happen onsite without a business?
Does anyone want to pick that up?
I can pick that up, I think. At least give it a stab and let somebody else carry the ball over the line. I do think this is an ongoing challenge, right? The reality is, because our school system only covers a certain portion of the day, and parents are typically at work, then the question is, well, how can I find a place that's first, safe, right? And then, second, and this is where you'll find the difference between low-income and high-income communities, that reinforces my kids' learning, right? It's not that they're replicating what they do during the school day, but what is it that keeps them curious, that keeps them inquisitive, that keeps them engaged? Because the reality is, in that summer learning loss that was addressed in the last panel, what we're seeing is those kids who come from higher-income homes, who have more options, are actually gaining in summer, whereas those kids who don't have those options are losing and losing up to half a year, right? So, then, the question is, how do we recognize that, not only in summer, but in after-school? And for parents, I mean, the reality is, a lot of the times, and this is part of the role that Detroit Parent Network plays, because there's not a system like an Excellent Schools Detroit report card or Great Start Quality type of system in place, it's parents talking to each other. So, having that network of parents that you can go to and have that conversation, say, okay, what is it that they're doing? Are they doing more than just watching your kids? Safety, of course, has to come first, right? It just has to. Because the reality is, you need to know your kid's coming home in one piece. But you have to delve further, and you have to ask questions. I can tell you that in our network, Detroit Area Pre-Collegiate Engineering Program is one, that a lot of our parents, as soon as they get involved, they go through the orientation, they see what their kids are doing, next thing you know, they're telling another parent, telling another parent, telling another parent. So, I think in some ways, our job is, until something is in place that ensures every kid has access to high-quality after-school options, it's about making sure that parents have a way to connect with each other and get access to those. And that creates also opportunities for carpooling, dealing with some of the transportation issues, those types of things.
Yeah, okay. Did you want to pick up?
No, we are looking at the EAA. Basically, with the EAA, also, the schools have a ton of what is called autonomy and flexibility at the local school level to basically have after-school programs, but we are looking to expand those, because we did research in the city of Detroit, between 3:00 and 6:00 o'clock, that's where most of the crimes take place for young people. And that's when they should be in some kind of after-school setting or something to that nature.
All right. Go ahead. Hi, ma'am.
Hello, my name's Janine Ernie. I'm the apprentice coordinator at Oakland Community College. I have a very brief question, but unfortunately, it's probably a longer answer. What about a complete educational paradigm shift from time-based education to competency-based education?
Tyrone?
Well, one thing about EAA, if I'm answering your question properly, we do look at mastery. We want to make sure students are not just proficient, they have to master that subject matter. And we would also like for our parents to be involved in that process as well. So, I agree with you. Competency is very important.
Yeah, I think at the EAA schools, what you see is a move away from grades, right? So, it's not, what grade are you in, third grade? It is, instead of pushing kids from grade to grade to grade, it's saying, you need to master this content. And then, once all of these contents are mastered, that's when you're hitting up at graduation. And I think that's something that, truthfully, it's a paradigm shift, if you will, in thinking for parents. There was a lot of anxiety. We hosted conversations with thousands of parents with the chancellor of the EAA when they first started talking about the effort. And the reality was, how will I know that my kid's not leaving with no mastery of hardly anything, because I won't know where they are? anything, because I won't know where they are? You know, how do I figure out whether or not they're on track? And those are issues, truthfully, that parents are still grappling with, but having the opportunity to see it in the small subsection of schools certainly helps. And that way, you know, because I can tell you, the superintendent, former superintendent from River Rouge, he said, when he got to Wayne State after graduating high school, that's when he realized he was illiterate. Don't you think that's a little bit late, right? So having that opportunity to really break our regular paradigms, which go grade to grade to grade, and look at mastery, I think, is a huge opportunity.
And just to follow up with that, I just spent 14 years at the University of Michigan directing this Detroit office before coming to EAA, and seven years at Michigan State University. Go blue, go green. Go white.
Go blue.
So anyway, so anyway, when you look at one of those students, when you look at the transcripts, and you look at the writing skills, and you look at when students apply to these universities and over 3,500 schools in the United States, mastery is extremely important. And parents get so caught up in my son or daughter being a 3.5 or 3.8, 4.0, take that out. You need to look at how, if they mastered that subject matter and also the curriculum, because colleges and universities want to see how the level of AP or honors classes or accelerated classes those students have. That's extremely important.
Okay, all right, but I'm going to jump in as a parent here and say, but can I, I need to label something. Like, I need to have some kind of something that tells me something. So David, I know that's the most roundabout, I don't even know what she just said, but isn't it hard, but isn't it hard, though, to think in those terms, though, that you need to at least say, stamp, they've got X grade, or they came from X grade, that you can't always just deal in a mastery of a concept?
Well, it's a mastery of a concept, and yes, that can be very clear to you on a well-developed report card that's much more complex than a simple A, B, C, D, E kind of report card. So it can be clear like that. I would argue, one thing I'd add to this, is we need to not just be talking about mastery, we need to be talking about maximizing every student's potential. Because if all we do is just talk about mastery and getting all kids above this bar, what if the student's capable of getting above this bar? If we go to a, at a cold-seat-time model, where, well, once you master it, then you can go home, we have just lowered the bar for a lot of kids. And so it's about maximizing every student's potential.
Great point.
That's the problem, right? And so the risk is, is that, that moving to something that there's no standards in terms of what, what is competency, right? In a state that has continued to decline, and even had problems with, you know, state leaders lowering cut scores on state assessments to, so that it looked like kids were actually doing far better than they were. There's a lot of risk in too quickly moving over to systems in which we don't really have the data infrastructure. We don't have things in place so that parents know, like, okay, my child is on track to go to Michigan State, or wherever it is that he or she wants to go to. So they're not, they're not getting into 11th grade and then doing horrible on the ACT, or they're not graduating and saying, oh, my gosh, I don't really know how to read as well as I thought I did.
Okay. Next question. Hi, ma'am.
My name is Raven Jones-Stambro, and my question is for Tammy. What existing partnerships does the Detroit Parent Network have with schools in Detroit? And how can parents who are unfamiliar with the work that you do become more involved?
Oh, I love you. I'll take it, and I'll get you your money later. So I think, so the easiest thing in terms of every parent, the, for Detroit Parent Network, we actually started Independent of School Systems on purpose, because as much as parents need to be partners with school systems, there also needs to be an element of somebody who's saying, it doesn't matter which district you're tied to, that your child deserves a great education. So that's where we started. So the short answer is, you can certainly become a member of our agency. It's $5 and five volunteer hours per year. Just go to detroitparentnetwork.org or stop on by our offices. In terms of the work that we do with school districts, and this is more recent, within the last three years, we do have contracts that exist with Detroit Public Schools to do some of their parent engagement work. We operate eight parent resource centers throughout the city, and we have parent organizers that work with the parent leaders in every single school of DPS to be able to help them navigate the systems and ensure that they're getting the best outcomes possible for kids. We have a similar contract with the EAA, and we have just recently, in the last month, opened two parent impairment centers in those schools to create a space where parents can come in and get supports. And then we also offer a variety of workshops and trainings in both charter schools, as well as in churches, youth development organizations. Just give us a call, check out our website, we're happy to be support to parents.
Sounds good. Go ahead, sir. Hi there.
Jesse Jackson III from FathersInSchools.com. And I guess I want to just ask the question and get a response. From everything I've heard, I've really begun to understand while students are the most important thing, we know who's driving the car, it's the parents. So what is our approach to making sure that our parents can support, so we don't lose our work, so we can invest $200 million into our students, but if our, if you look at the data and see that parents don't have GEDs, parents didn't complete, parents didn't maximize their potentials, parents are disgruntled with their life and where they ended up, what is our approach, then, to making sure that our parents can actually be what we want the students to be, because that's how we don't lose our work?
So I'll take the first go at it, and then I'll be quiet. I can tell you, at Detroit Parent Network, it's funny to me that you mentioned this, because we've seen in our project graduation program, which works with kids in 7th through 12th grade, typically first-generation college students, to make sure they're on track to finish high school and successfully enroll in college. What we've seen in that program, as we give parents tools to really make sure that their kids are on track and getting ready to get into college successfully, is that the parents themselves start asking questions. Financial aid, is that available to me? And we have our parents, then, going back and enrolling in programs part-time, so that they can actually build their own strength, and they can be a model to their kids. Regardless of where a parent is, I guarantee you, they want better for their children. And so to me, the question isn't, you know, whether or not parents want what's best for their kids, it's what information, what supports do they need to be able to get that successfully? And that's really where we try to focus our work.
And also with parents, part of my role with EAA, I'm also in charge of expulsion and suspension hearings, and I sit and listen to parents, and I look in their eyes. A lot of them don't have hope for their children, and that translates to their children not having hope. And it's really, it's really such a negative experience to sit and talk to a parent about